October 26, 2020. Thank you for joining us. And in our agenda, you will notice there is an airtable link. It is the same airtable link that we've used in the past. If you do have a public comment or question, feel free to use that link. And we will make an effort to get to your question. If we don't get to your question tonight, or you have a concern, please forward that question or concern to your teacher, building principal, or central administration as appropriate. If you have any difficulties with the viewing, you have multiple options. You can view us on Zoom or on the Westford Cat channel or the Westford Chat YouTube link. We're trying to give people several options during this technological age. And then we will now proceed to informational updates. Phil. You're on mute, Phil. Whoops.
I'm sorry, I should know that by now. We did have a very good superintendent's forum last Thursday evening. I want to apologize to the parents who tuned in last Monday night to attend the forum. What I was unaware of is that my account, my Zoom account, had been accidentally disabled. And so no matter what I was trying to do, I could not start the meeting and connect with people, but we rectified that. And Thursday night, we had a very good conversation. It mostly focused on COVID-related issues. Lots of good questions and comments. Some ideas that we have taken away from that that we talked with the staff about. We have another one coming up in a couple of weeks. The November one that will be in the morning. We alternate evening and morning just to try and broaden the ability of as many people as possible to participate in those forums. Last Friday, we had one of our four leadership team meetings that during the year that focuses on school safety. And Carrie and I met with principals. We talked about, actually, we talked about the process that we went through a couple of years ago that some of you participated in, which was an actual mock evaluation to a rally point and then to a evacuation reunification site. We reviewed once again the procedures, crisis response teams from the individual schools and the system-wide crisis response team. We talked about the orderly and safe dismissal of students, what that should look like, the involvement of law enforcement and public safety officials. And so we had a good conversation just to try and refocus on something that's very important and has, I think, in many school systems been somewhat placed on the back burner because of our preoccupation with the COVID virus. You know, some of us did receive emails today from the DEI Town Committee and Anita in particular. And we are going to be meeting shortly to collaborate. She was pleased with some of the priorities that the DEI Committee and the school system has established. And so we look forward to meeting with them. And we will have our next DEI Diversity Equity and Inclusion meeting coming up on November 12th. All right, we're looking forward to that. We have broken up into subcommittees and working on various tasks. The COVID Advisory Committee will meet again this Wednesday. We have been meeting every two weeks. I think on Wednesday, I'm going to probably suggest that we meet every three weeks only because that's the sort of the timeline that the DPH and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education look toward or making some sort of decision. They want three weeks, three to four weeks worth of data and for us to be able to provide that data to them if necessary. The Abbott School had a wonderful mock election that was very well participated with students. I'm just taking a look at my notes here in a moment. It was run by the Kennedy Library, the Kennedy Foundation. Those students who were in school participated in the mock election. And those students who were fully remote were able to mail in, in quotes, their ballots. And so we want to congratulate the Abbott School for doing a great job. And it was a lot of participation by students. Before I end, I want to also congratulate the golf team for winning the county championship. And students are participating well in sports. I spoke with Athletic Director Jeff Bunyan today. They are being responsible in terms of mask wearing, social distancing, parents are being excellent, being monitored in terms of numbers of parents participating and attending events. And all of the safety protocols that have been put in place are in fact being observed. And so I want to express my appreciation to everyone on adhering to safety regulations. And I'll give you a little bit more on the COVID opening update a little bit later in the agenda. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Bill. Carrie.
Thank you. Last week, we had two parent evening sessions for K-2 families. And the focus was on technology and how to help support children at home with the technology for the off-week work when students are not in school. And we had 36 participants the first night. And the focus there was on Google Chrome and Chromebooks. And then we had 28 participants on the second night, which was geared more toward navigating Google, Google Meet, Google Drive, slides, et cetera. And so this week, we're offering the same two sessions, but for grade three to five parents. On Wednesday at 7:00 PM, we're going to be hosting a session around Google, I'm sorry, around Chrome and Chromebooks. And then the following night on Thursday evening, also at 7:00 PM, that will be the session on Google. While it's labeled, you know, Google and Chrome, we're also going through Clever and Seesaw, which are other platforms that are used at the elementary level so that parents kind of get all of the details and have the opportunity to ask questions. So we're pleased that we had some great participation. Parents were interacting, asking wonderful questions. So we're pleased with that. Next Tuesday on November 3rd, it is a full professional development day. So there's no school for students, but the staff do participate. And we're excited about what we have planned for that day. The day will consist of seven sessions that are geared toward technology for staff, seven sessions per hour. So over the course of the day, we have five one-hour offerings. And there are seven choices in each one of those hours. Staff have to attend at least three. And some of these examples are, one is called K-2 Can Two, which is G-Suite for our youngest learners. So extra tips and tricks for keeping those five, six, and seven-year-olds engaged even when they're not right here in front of us. There's also updates to Google Meet. Finally, the breakout rooms have rolled out along with some other bells and whistles that Google has implemented into their Google Meet to make meets more engaging and allows teachers to break out and have small group instructions, have students collaborating. It will also share some apps and extensions that can help engage students and shift kind of from the teacher-led instruction into a more student-centered approach that really enables the four Cs, which is collaboration, creativity, communication, and critical thinking skills. We know that we had done a lot of work in the traditional school setting to help foster these skills. And some of that has come to a bit of a halt with the hybrid model. But there are certainly ways that we can use the tools to help get certainly on track with promoting those four Cs. And then we have beginner sessions and advanced sessions of Seesaw, Google Classroom, EdPuzzle, PeerDeck, which are other programs that we're using for the hybrid model. So we're really excited about that. Lots of choices, lots of levels. And I think staff will appreciate having kind of a tier-two version of what we did during the first two weeks of school when people were first starting to get oriented with what this was all going to look like, the two weeks of professional development. So now there's some experience, some additional background knowledge that the teachers will come with because they've now been doing it for almost a couple of months by that point. And then a lot of our conversations now are geared toward report cards and what report cards will look like. We did share with everybody that we would be doing formal grading and will certainly be doing exactly that for report cards. But at the elementary level, for example, we have identified priority standards. So not every single standard will be fully covered to mastery. They'll all be embedded into the teaching, but only certain standards that we've identified as a priority standard will be addressed to the point of assessing for mastery. So how we're going to make those report cards look so that there's not these kind of ugly blanks on the report card next to the standards that we aren't formally assessing. And then conversation continues to be had at the high school level about, you know, reporting on number grades versus letter grades. So there's wonderful, rich discussion that is taking place to make sure that we communicate exactly how students are doing in a way that is adapted to the hybrid model, but obviously, parent, student, and family-friendly so that it does provide information that's needed to be able to articulate how students are doing. So that's where we are.
That was a ton of information from Bill and Carrie. Thank you both. Any quick questions on that so far? I feel like there was a lot there. Not yet? Okay, all right, I'm sure we'll be discussing more during reopening. But wonderful to hear about all the things that are happening and all the ongoing discussions that are occurring. Thank you both. Ingrid, is there a finance update?
Just real quick. I've submitted today to Town Hall our first quarter and then anticipated through the end of the second quarter COVID-19 expenses that would be eligible for the municipal side cares funds. That number totaled $1,352,000. So that was significant. We still have another million-dollar grant available to us through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which will cover most of our, hopefully, leave costs and technology costs. The submittal that I sent in today included over $800,000 for cleaning and disinfecting of our schools, including air quality improvements, HVAC improvements, and another close to $150,000 of PPE. So, you know, we're doing our best to keep our schools clean, the air quality is excellent, and keeping everyone safe. And then additionally, later on, when you approve the warrants, I did when I was reviewing them. It jumps out that we have about 50 extra people right now on our payroll. We have 46 people out on long-term leaves. Not all of those are COVID, some are FMLA leaves for a variety of reasons. And then we have probably another 10 extra people that are covering shorter-term absences, 10 to 14-day absences. So I just did want to make you aware of that. And that's it right now. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ingrid. And thank you to you and Bill and Paul Fox, our entire maintenance custodial facility staff and all the work that's been done over the summer and ongoing to keep our buildings safe and clean and healthy. And it is wonderful to see. And we're glad that we do have the opportunity to have a number of those expenses reimbursed. School committee update, aside from other items on the agenda later. Alicia.
So I have two updates. The first is, like Bill said, the DEI met recently. So far, we're going to start breaking into smaller subgroups to address some of the leftover things that we were working on in a previous year, plus some of the newer concerns. Most of what I'm hearing from staff is they're looking for sort of support in a toolbox so that they can start addressing these issues for our students with our students in appropriate ways, both in classroom settings and in curriculum. I think our support for them, it would also, one of the things I heard was as we're providing them with these tools, providing them with the space within our professional development structure to be able to access those tools and other groups and to be able to work on things would be immensely helpful. We are already asking them to do so much to ask these staff and administrators who have been doing this on their own beyond the timeframe to then, you know, work even longer than they have been. It would be better for their time management, better for, you know, support from us if they were able to, if we're able to start folding things like that into the professional development. So there are parents, there are students, there's staff, there are administrators involved. And like I said, we've started to, like Bill said, we started to break out into smaller, like, teams to try and start addressing some of these things. The second update is from the CPAC. Last week, the CPAC had Director Courtney Moran meet with us. I am not on the CPAC Board anymore, but I am a member of CPAC. And I thought that was a really great conversation. Most of what I'm hearing from both special education staff and special education parents is the struggle and the communication, the need for communication. So it bears repeating that if you are struggling with something involving your child's IEP, involving your child's learning experience right now, reach out to your teacher, reach out to your team. They can't help you if they don't know that there's a problem to begin with. And communicating between the two groups is absolutely essential. It's a hard year for everyone, and everyone is doing their best. I just experienced my first remote IEP meeting a couple of weeks ago. That was weird, but I am grateful to everyone involved for making it work. So please continue to communicate. And the second part of that is, I'm very pleased to announce that for the second year in a row, November, by decree of the governor, Governor Baker, will be Special Education Parent Advisory Council Awareness Month. So this is something that Kathy Healy Norton from the CPAC, myself, and Laurie McCarron from Chelmsford have been working on for a couple of years now. And we're receiving a proclamation on November 1st, declaring it the Awareness Month. And I think that would be a really great opportunity for the school committee to invite the current CPAC Board to come and talk to us and share how things are going for special education parents this year. And that's it.
Great, Alicia, we should absolutely do that. Make change.
Yeah, so after the school committee and Select Board jointly applied a town DI committee. So I'm working with Anita from Select Board side, trying to actually guide the first town DI committee meeting started. So we're working with town department has, and then I'm working with the committee members trying to get, hopefully, next week.
Fantastic. So glad that is launching. Anyone else right now? Okay, not seen any hands. Then we're on student updates. Hannah and Brian.
We just had our joint Student Council and School Committee meeting today, where we talked about a lot of things. So most of our student updates went right to there. We talked about a lot of the feelings of students with hybrid learning, their needs being met, like mentally, and how like they feel safe in the school with mental health and COVID, of course. And we talked about a lot of that good stuff there.
Great, thank you. Anything to add, Hannah?
No, I think Brian covered it.
Okay, great, thank you. And I hope you had a good conversation before the meeting. Let's see. Is there anything from our airtable comments at the moment? Or should we go into reopening?
There's one focused on reopening, but I'd say we can get to that after we.
All right, then, thanks for monitoring that, Chris. And then we'll head into reopening. Bill. You're on mute, Bill. It's Monday.
I guess so. It's Monday and it's 2020. So I apologize, everyone. We are updating the dashboard information every week. Once again, the DPH publishes the weekly update, but generally after 6:00 PM on Wednesdays. And so it will either be Thursday or Friday that we update with the new weekly information. We presently have, in our school system, three positive cases. All of those notifications have been sent out for the in-house students. One student is a remote student. And we have 11 close contacts, excuse me, eight close contacts. So we're doing very well. Our students are being very disciplined in terms of wearing the masks and social distancing. I still would encourage parents in the outside-of-school environment to please discourage larger-scale, you know, parties or get-togethers of friends because the transmission of the virus to this point in time in Westford has taken place primarily outside of the school environment. And we want to make sure it doesn't come into the school environment such that we have clusters developing. So we will continue to provide information to our staff and to parents as it develops. We will continue to update information and increase information on the dashboard because I think that's been helpful. A lot of people have, in fact, referred to that for information. With the upcoming holidays also, would like to remind people that if you were traveling to a high-risk state or to a country outside of the United States, the requirement in Massachusetts continues to be that you have to quarantine for 14 days or be tested within 72 hours of your return. You have to quarantine until you do receive a negative test result. And then you can resume your activities, return to school, et cetera. So please be aware of that. Go to mass.gov website to make sure you understand the travel restrictions and requirements. It's very important, given the fact that the transmission rate is increasing in the last three days in Massachusetts. There have been over 1,000 new COVID-19 cases. So it is trending, the numbers are trending in the wrong direction right now. We're concerned, but we're doing our best within the school system to make sure that everyone is as safe and healthy as possible. Students have been wonderful, and the staff has been wonderful also. So with that, I'm glad to answer any questions that you have or anybody in the public might have.
Avery.
Okay, so I just had a couple of follow-up questions. I'm very thankful that our school system is doing so well. Bill, can you give us an update on the MERV-13s? Is that now successfully in place in all the schools? And mask breaks can now can take place inside the schools?
Yes, the MERV-13 filters have all been installed. Given the timeframe that it took for them to come in, not only in Western but across the country, we've already placed another order for them that we expect for, you know, the January, February timeframe. But yes, they are all installed. And you're correct. What that means is that mask breaks can be taken during inclement conditions indoors. Obviously, a lot of the staff and students prefer to continue to take the breaks outdoors while the weather is fairly nice.
And I had a second question. Have you received any update from Athletic Director Bunyan on winter sports? I know that there was supposed to be a vote here at the end of the month.
I believe, if I recall correctly, that vote is going to be taken on or about November 1st. And so Jeff has been very good in terms of informing me of any activity by the MIAA. As soon as I receive that, I will convey it to you through an email. But also, and we'll talk about it at a following school committee.
And thank you, Bill, for, during your update, for mentioning, of course, the upcoming holidays. I'll add, please, there are recommendations and advisories out from our local Board of Health regarding Halloween and trick-or-treating and gatherings over this Halloween weekend. So please, everyone, please be cognizant of that, of those recommendations. And please be safe over Halloween as well. Any other questions, comments? Avery?
We, no, go to Avery.
It was in relation to the news that we got today or some of us got a little alert on our phones about Chelmsford. Bill, have you been able to speak to Chelmsford Superintendent to find out if it's impacting their school or if this is a cluster that they've been able to contain outside of the school? And does this impact any of our sports or activities?
I have not spoken with the Chelmsford Superintendent as of today. I will give him a call tomorrow, though. I know I've been speaking with them, a number of the area superintendents, about two weeks ago, and I know that's two weeks ago. Although some of them were, some of those towns were in the red demarcation of the Department of Public Health, the impact on the school system was fairly minimal. I don't recall any of them experiencing any clusters of several students or more who might test positive. So I will check that out and I will send that to you as quickly as I receive it.
My understanding is the town now has to take steps backwards in opening.
Yes, and some of the business openings and the timeline, the conditions under which they open have changed. I do want to remind you also that I did put in the packet the updated matrix that I will be reviewing with the COVID Advisory Committee this Wednesday. This was put together after consultation with a couple of the physicians, Dr. Sheehy and Dr. Egan, who were excellent. And I anticipate they'll both be with us this Wednesday. And we'll take a final look at this matrix of metrics that we look at, both quantitative in nature and qualitative in nature also.
Bill, can I ask on that, first of all, matrix of metrics? That's really fun to say. Is there anything you'd want to highlight that changed from our last meeting on that?
The physicians thought that some of my numbers might be too high in terms of the kind of the threshold of numbers of students testing positive. They thought also that it would be more helpful to change to a numerical value, pure number, instead of a percentage. And so I've done that in one of the series of data also.
Thank you. And a question submitted from the public is about transitioning. As the end of term comes around, families who may want to transition from hybrid to RLA or vice versa, just general questions about how that happens? How, who do they notify that they would want to make that change? When do they do that? When does that transition happen? Things like that.
Well, they can contact their building principal at any point in time. The one caveat is that if we continue, and I assume we will towards the end of this year, under the current circumstances with the hybrid model, any RLA student who would like to return in the hybrid model, that would be subject to space availability. And I think, as Carrie mentioned in our open house, my forum last week, may involve a change of teacher. Carrie, if you want to expound on that a little bit?
Sure. So we did ask families to try their best to commit to at least the first semester with whatever decision they.
with whatever decision they were making. And that was so that we could get things underway, and we wouldn't have a revolving door effect as we were figuring this all out. So the end of the first semester is at the end of January. It's somewhere around January 27th. And there's nothing really magic about that date. It was just giving us time to allow the dust to settle. And if there are people who are looking to make any changes, as the superintendent said, they should contact their building principal. What we aren't going to do is to send out kind of a survey to everybody to say, hey, does anybody want to make a switch? Because our classes, for the most part, with the exception of some at WA, are not semester classes. So students are already placed, and classes were built based on who is going to be in and who's going to be out. So there could be a scenario where an RLA student, who typically streams in to the live class when APod hybrid kids are in at Westford Academy, then decides that they would like to transfer back to the hybrid model and leave the RLA. There might not be space in that class during that block to accommodate the six feet of distance. And in that scenario, that child might, who wants to come in from RLA to hybrid, have to be placed in another class. We certainly talked about making sure that we, any changes that are made, don't impact graduation requirements. But those are the types of things that we have to consider if people do want to make a switch. So as a result, we aren't doing a full survey saying, you know, at this point, we're going to do an entire reshuffle. But if people are wanting to make that change, then we can, we can move forward and accommodate that. There will be a time anywhere from maybe potentially three to six weeks before that change can occur, because there needs to be some scheduling and logistics that have to be taken care of by the building principal.
So there's no date, there's no hard date, but they should reach out, and then it'll take some time to process that and see how that plays out with classes and sections. What, what is the date for the end of Term One? Do we know off the top of our head? And I know it's different, because are the middle schools there? I mean, are they still on a different, are they still on trimesters?
Trimesters, and Westford Academy is on the quarters. And I think January 27th is the date that comes to mind.
Yes, it is.
For a semester.
This is 27.
Thanks.
Valerie?
Yeah, just as we're talking about kind of hitting a half-year point soon, I was wondering if there's any planned conversations about reflections about how it's been going? I know we've been clearly kind of talking about teacher workload and some improvements or suggestions that have happened at the elementary level. I know you've mentioned the Panorama survey results. But as far as kind of family situations and just this particular model, right, which we all admit was built kind of on paper in the summer. So just kind of wondering if there was any planned discussions on, now that it's been a couple months in practice, like reflecting on that and seeing if there's any adjustments planned?
Well, we'll, we'll continue to talk with the staff. I know Kerry and I are in and out of the schools. We've talked with them. I was over the Christopher Foley School today. And, you know, I have to say, the staff has been terrific. They are, they're under tremendous pressure in school, synchronous, asynchronous. But all of the comments were positive today when I went through the Christopher Foley School. And we will have some, some convers, some more focused conversations with them. We'll have some conversations with, with the parents. That's one of the, one of the topics that I'll cover in the next two superintendent's forum meetings. We're also going to have, coming up in November and very early December, Valerie, associated with the budget process, is some listening sessions in terms of education priorities and fiscal priorities. But we'll weave in there also reflections on what parents have experienced. We know from last, last Thursday's superintendent's forum, it's not, still not working for everyone. People would like to, would like, some people would like to have the kids return in full right now. And it just, that unfortunately can't happen. But we will make a concerted effort, bring back information to you in terms of what we're hearing from the staff, what we're hearing from the parents, and what we're hearing from students. We started to hear that tonight, and I thought it was mostly positive in meeting with the students prior to this meeting.
Go ahead, Valerie. I guess I just meant more, more from the parents. And I know you mentioned those forums have also a budget spin. So I don't, I mean, I know everyone hates the word "survey" in 2020, but maybe like a parent survey, especially really for the elementary families to feel like that their suggestions could be that they have an outlet for some feedback.
We've got a question out to members on our listserv from other areas, just pooling together resources for surveys. And I mean, it's a fairly, you know, easy task to create the questions that we'd like, but we just want to make sure that we're not missing anything. So we are drafting a survey for families just to assess, you know, their experience and how they feel about their child's, whether it be RLA or even within a hybrid, the in-person weeks versus the at-home weeks. We wanted to send out the staff survey first so that in the case that there's any feedback from staff, if there's something that we need to apply to get a feel for the parent survey, we could do that. But I think based on the timeline with the server, survey around social, emotional, and some of the fairly significant changes that we've made at the elementary, we have decided to postpone that a little bit. And so I think that the parent survey will come out first, which is fine, really, either way. So yes, we are in the process of building that.
Chris?
As a follow-on, first, I want to say, I, I mean, I'm impressed with, you know, Valerie talked about how in the summer it was on paper, and now we're living it. And I really am impressed, impressed with how well it's going and how well it tracks with, I think what we expected it would look like. I know a lot of that is thanks to our staff and administrators putting an enormous amount of effort to make it work, and our families for being flexible. So I realize it takes a lot to get us to this point where I feel like, okay, this, you know, this, this is okay for now. But I also, at the same time, I'm hearing voices from, from teachers and from parents who say, I can't imagine us doing this until, you know, until June. So to that end, you know, and I see a comment from the public asking, you know, looking at the metrics, and I know we've talked about this, but, you know, what, what do we look at to say, can we do more in person? And what would it take to do that? And what would the conditions have to be? And is that something that, do we feel like we're at a place where we're steady state enough that we can start imagining possible contingencies that say, you know, we could try to bring in more students one way that, or the other, whether it's at just the elementary level, or it's only if, you know, the rates, positivity rates are, you know, close to zero? I'm just asking, do we, do we have a sense of whether we want to start thinking like that? Or whether we have the bandwidth to think like that to put something in place that at least imagines a world where, before the fall of 2021, we have more students in person more of the time than we do now?
Well, we, you know, we, for the short term, Chris, I think it's too early to think about, you know, any return, more complete return of students. You know, you see the number of variables and criteria that we use, both quantitative in nature and qualitative on our matrix here. Some of it is, how many absences, student absences do we have over a three-week period? How many staff absences? Because one of the, one of the, two of the, I shall say, criteria that we look at is the rate of transmission within the school system, which to this point in time has been low. But also our staffing capacity, our ability to conduct classes with enough staff. And so right now, we're in a precarious period, the increases in the numbers. I know in talking with one of the physicians from Pediatrics West, he was questioning quite a bit whether or not we would see, be able to see a change to a more fully in-person model. I mean, certainly that's what, you know, we're planning for the following school year, and certainly the next superintendent, I hope, will be planning for that. But it's just, we're just not at that point just yet, particularly with everything trending upward, with some of the communities now withdrawing some of their open permissions for businesses. And it's, it's a very difficult time, time right now. And I think we need to, we'll hold the course in terms of the hybrid model and the remote learning academy for right now. That, I mean, that would be my recommendation. But we'll most certainly keep looking forward to opening back up when the numbers begin to stabilize, having dropped some certainly, and stabilized from there.
I think in all fairness, one thing to add to that is none of, none of, of course, if there was an emergency situation, there is a chance that we might need to shift to an all-remote model on very quickly. But if there is going to be a consideration of a full return, we have to take into account the impact that that has on staff, their childcare needs, their, their personal family schedule. And we do have an agreement in place with the WEA as part of our memorandum of understanding with them that there would be a minimum 45 days' notice of such a full return. So if, if parents are waiting, be aware, we have to see an improvement. The superintendent would have to make the decision that we could be headed in the direction, based on our Board of Health and medical advice. And then there would be that built-in period of time to ensure that, yes, we are on the right trajectory and to make those appropriate preparations from both the school and staff perspective, because a lot of things would have to come into place to make that happen. So I just think it's just fair to set everyone's expectations appropriately. Other comments, questions? Valerie?
Are we talking about snow days under the calendar update?
We weren't going to, under the calendar, we had not planned. We are going to be discussing that in a negotiations meeting this Wednesday. I know the commissioner has given communities, local communities discretion to have either full-remote days or no school days in entirety. We will be discussing, I'm a little bit reluctant to discuss it right now, other than just letting you know and the public know that the commissioner has said that it's up to the local, local community. You know, there are those communities, such as ours, where, you know, my thinking is, if we have something that would normally create a two-hour delay or one-hour delay, which we will not be doing right now during the hybrid model, because we have an early release schedule, then that doesn't necessarily mean the entire cancellation of the school day. So, but that's something we're going to discuss with the union. And stay tuned, because I will tell you that there could be some, and I hate to say it, but there could be some accumulating snow later this week, Thursday night into Friday morning. And so that's a question, Valerie, that is very important right now, and we're going to be discussing that on Wednesday afternoon.
I have, I have just a couple more random ones. Have we talked about, is there normally a flu clinic in the schools? Or is there one talked about for this year?
Well, the flu, the Department, our health department has been conducting flu clinics. They have not been in the schools. Most of their activity has been from the water department, sort of a drive-through model. In fact, I was over there last week getting a shot myself. It's a very, they've done an outstanding job. Ordinarily, we would have hosted a flu clinic at the Millennium, as we have historically done. But we were reluctant to do that, and the health department agreed because of the employees, but also the recreation department programs that are running in what was formerly occupied by the preschool program at the Millennium.
And has, has there been any, like, rebalancing with the bus numbers? I know some buses are really light on ridership, and I'm just wondering if that's going to be looked at at all?
So I actually got the elementary bus routes with all the addresses and the number of kids today in Excel. So Jen Piper and I are going to go through them. We're waiting for Dee to, you know, feed us all the information. Some of the buses are light, definitely, because as much as we tried to do the pods within neighborhoods, they're outliers, that, you know, kids that moved in later and once school started or once the pods were set, some rebalancing had to happen because of space and family situations and schedules. So we're trying to make it so that we can pick up some of these outliers without extending the bus routes time. You know, we don't want the kids on the bus for extended periods of time. So it's, but we, we definitely are looking at that. Trust me, I would like to rebalance if we can.
Any other questions? Friendly reminder to get those flu shots. And I guess I need to check the weather, because I didn't see that one coming, Bill. Anything else? Or Kerry, I know we, we touched on a lot of instructional topics. Did you have anything else for reopening?
Not at this time.
All right, then, I guess we are on to Superintendent FY21 goals.
Well, I want to thank you for your positive comments about the goals at the last school committee meeting. I did make a couple of minor revisions based on your, on your comments, but I also added the measurement criteria. And those, the dates, the timelines, the tasks that I will be completing prior to the end of this school year, as you know, we focus on budget. We focus on diversity, equity, inclusion, and we focus on the social, emotional well-being and using the Panorama program. We talked today about two upcoming trainings on Panorama. One, interpreting survey results, and then moving from the survey results to the plan of action. And Chris, which is something that you asked at the last meeting, can you tell me what the specific activities might look like? Well, included in my, my goals document, just, just three, primarily at the elementary level, which is sort of a peace corner, creating a space safe for reflection, primarily for elementary and middle school students, virtual calming space. In fact, one of our principals, assistant principals, excuse me, Scott Millis has done an excellent job in creating a calming space. Click-on-screen that provides students with, with various information and an online kindness and empathy library, which is also very, very clever, and also a click-on-screen that students can, can access. And so these are just a very few of the strategies and the activities that we'll be looking to implement, certainly at all grade levels, not only the elementary, but the middle school and, and high school. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. We're looking forward to our listening sessions with the public in November and early December. With regard to the budget, we're looking forward to our Budget 101 presentation to the public, just so that people understand to a greater degree of depth what goes into our budget, what are the priorities that you're going to talk about in terms of your priorities in a little bit. So I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Bill. I certainly appreciate the specificity of the action items and the timeline and the collaborations with Budget Subcommittee and our DEI team. and the collaborations with Budget Subcommittee and our DEI team and, and others. Any comments or questions from the committee?
May I just say also Gloria, we're looking very much forward to meeting with the town DEI committee and joining forces, not only to expand and, and, and expand our impact on our students and our staff, but also on the, on the community. Cause we can both have us, you can have a symbiotic relationship and benefit each other in terms of the various courses of action that we're taking.
Excited about that new group as well. And we'll, we'll, we'll try and be specific when we're talking about the school team versus the town committee. But they are both DEI focused. Any, any other comments, questions? I know we discussed this at our last meeting as well. Seeing none, I will, I will make a motion to accept the superintendent's goals for FY21.
Second.
Second.
And all in favor, Avery?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
And I am also an aye, so that would be unanimous. Didn't miss anybody, right? Okay.
Well, thank you, thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Bill. And let's see, next up is club activities and stipend approvals.
We have Betsy Murphy, Dean Betsy Murphy with us, there you go. And Betsy has met with Kerry and I, she's done a great job in putting together the number of clubs and activities. Except for Western Academy, please know and remember that there'll be virtually nothing at the elementary level right now. But Betsy, I'll turn that over to you if that's okay with you Gloria.
Sure. Okay. So this year, I think we, and, and as Bill said, I sat down with Kerry, Bill and Ingrid after Jim and I sat down and went over all the clubs, activities and advisor stipends. And this year we are planning to run 50 of our 95-ish stipends, clubs, advisor roles. Some of those have been on hold for a couple of years. As you know, they sit in the contract and sometimes the clubs don't run. But we have pulled back on about a dozen clubs that, that can't run the way that we should run. I would say about 80% of this clubs this year will be run remotely. And the club advisors have great plans to go forward with that and run the clubs, chess club online and all the other clubs online. There'll be a few that will run in person, outing club, Cirrus, ski club, obviously if we get to the slopes, if that can happen, troubadours, so some of the music safely run. So I think we have a good plan. We're looking at, as I said, about 20% in person, but mostly virtual for the year. So this year, we didn't allow any new pilots to come through. We just have enough going on here. Last year, there were three pilots that I'd like to push forward or to send forward. The World of Difference, the ADL group that we had a pilot for, for two stipend positions. The Graphic Design Club and the Equestrian Club are the three that were in pilot positions hoping to go forward so that we don't stop that momentum on those three organizations and clubs.
Okay, on those, on those new clubs, I, I would guess that the ADL, World of Difference and Graphic Design are, are running remote. And I would guess Equestrians running in person because I don't know how else that would work.
They are actually doing virtual competitions. So they are at, at their barns and videotaping and competing. So they have already taken a few awards and we are actually going to, if you approve, we are going to be hosting something for the state, which is all virtual. It's pretty cool. Yeah.
Wow, that, that is awesome. Okay, I'm so glad I asked because that's really cool. Talk about a testament to our, our staff and, and students for being creative in ways to function in, in this remote virtual world. That's fantastic. It's great to see the, the range of, of offerings that we are still able to offer. You know, it may not work for everything, but so thrilled to have that, those offerings. I think it's just so important for our students and their, their mental health and wellness and their, their peer interaction, even if it's, even if it's in this remote context, just to be able to share all those common interests. I'm just so glad that all of these things are still happening at our, at our schools. It's such an important part of our high schools. Other questions, comments, concerns to the committee, Avery?
So I had a couple, ski club jumped out at me for sure. And my understanding was that all clubs needed to submit a plan to the principal and that that would need to be approved with a contingent for virtual ability to run the club. And I'm at a loss as to how, granted, Equestrians seems to be doing it. How some of these other clubs are able to have that caveat that we had written in to, with the, the WEA to be able to hold all of these things virtually and have all of these submitted these new plans.
Yes, all of them have submitted the new plans that I brought to Bill and Kerry and Ingrid and Jim and I sat down with. So obviously if what you said is open, they have, they have two, a two-tiered plan. One is that depending on the numbers in the bus situation, if they can bus the students, you know, one per seat and do the same thing with the masks and then do the rules by the mountain, that is the plan. If they can't do that safely, then, then they are going to have students dropped at the mountain. But obviously they know, and that's a club that doesn't even get going until after the new year where they kick in. So they, they are well aware that they might not start at all, but they are hopeful. So they don't, they don't even collect a dues or a fee or anything at this point. They will, they will wait to see what happens as we move forward. So that's a club that only runs during the ski season.
Right. And the marching band and the troubadours and some of these other musical types. I know that there were restrictions on what musical kind of activities we could have in the building versus outside the building. And how are we accommodating that?
So Michael Su has been great, terrific. He's going to run the program by himself without three assistants this year. So that's going to save on our stipends. But he is working with the color guard director and they actually have practice tonight. So they're doing the same social distancing that they do during school. And he's going to get ready for at least two concerts. If they need to be virtual, they're going to be virtual. But he is, you know, obviously with football season starting on February 22nd, the two of us won't be playing out in the field in that weather. So he's got a plan A and a B, but I think the most important thing is to keep the kids engaged and connected and playing music and, and they're ready to do what they need to do. Does that answer that question?
Speak to the middle school activities and why there is such a short list and noticeably no ski club for the middle school where there is for the high school.
I don't think I can, I, I can't speak to that.
Sure, no, I didn't, I figured I'd ask, but I didn't think.
I'm not sure, no, I know Andrea, Andrea was working with all of her music people. And we had, I had a whole separate meeting with Andrea about what, what could be run and what was curricular versus co-curricular. So I know she's been in touch with her people. So whatever they decided together, I'm, I'm not quite sure.
And I assume that stipends, Ingrid, I guess that we're being asked to approve tonight, are those listed in the current contract?
Yes, they're, they're the ones that would be in the current contract.
The current contract?
Yes.
And does anybody have any comment on the, the middle school and, you know, notably the lack of a ski club where the WA has a ski club?
So these are just, you know, we reached out to all the schools to, and this is what they submitted to us, you know, approved by the principals to run right now, so.
So this could be that the staff just aren't interested or able to take on clubs right now.
That could be.
Building specific.
I wish Jeff was here, Avery, but I, I think, I think there was a discussion with the middle school folks about anything that was kind of athletic related. And obviously there was, they decided, they inevitably decided to hold back almost.
Right, but a ski club wouldn't be, and last year there was a very vibrant ski club. I, I think it was through Blanchard, but I'm not sure. Okay. So we didn't have any more, Chris?
I just had a tag along about middle school. We had a, a parent ask if it would be possible for middle schoolers to potentially join some of the virtual WA clubs if appropriate.
That's, that's an interesting question. Well, you know what, Betsy, I'll give you a call. Come on, see how, see how viable that is.
Okay.
May I just say also, may I make a comment that with respect to music? In talking with Andrea Mahia, who was the coordinator, we have ordered some special masks with small slits for students to be able to play brass instruments and wind instruments. We have ordered some bell covers for the ends of trumpets and trombones just to, just to eliminate, will greatly diminish any transmission of, of moisture droplets. We also have special absorbent pads for, and I know this is not a very glamorous term, but as a former trumpet player, for spit valves. And so, you know, we've, we've, we've tried to do as much as possible to allow students to have a great experience and even some, some adaptive equipment like that.
I think people are willing to do whatever it takes to have some outside activity, truly.
That's right.
Yep.
And Bill, is there anything we can do, I second what Chris had said and thinking out of the box to offer a little bit more to our middle schoolers who I think are, are losing out quite a bit here with the, with the, the list of clubs and activities?
I'll, I'll have that conversation with the two middle school principals in the next day or two.
Any other questions, comments, Sean?
Betsy, am I losing it? Were there multiple ADL coordinators at one point?
There are ADL coordinators at the middle school and at the high school. So I submitted last year as a, for pilots for our two positions that we had. I was under the impression that the middle schools submitted for that too, but maybe they didn't. But yes, we have more than two coordinators, but two, two we had at the school last year. Some of, some of us did it without being paid, but yes, two that we had.
And is there, I, I guess in recognizing this, are we, is the inevitable goal to try to get those coordinators paid?
At the middle school?
I guess just across the board, right? Because are we just talking one stipend for this club?
That's, that's what we put through last year and the two people split one stipend. So it took 212 each, I think it was 212 or.
Okay.
So I'm not sure what happened with the middle school. But yes, I think that's the goal to definitely have people paid for, it's a lot of work.
Yeah, just off topic, and that's just my, my, my gut on this tells me that that position entails a tremendous amount of work. And if we're going to put all this time into the DEI, both in the town side and in the town, and within the schools, that we really should be kind of putting our money where our mouth is on this. I mean, our stipends aren't a tremendous amount and I know money's tight, but if it's a priority, then let's pay them. So that's my view on it.
And some of the stipends that we have listed, we've categorized them as, you know, clubs and organizations. And certainly running a chess club is different from an organization that's supposed to be part of the fabric, right? So hopefully, but, but we also have an equation in the contract that sometimes doesn't allow for that. So whatever we can do, it would be great because it certainly is more of an organization and a way of life that we're trying to get rather than a club.
Right, right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Alicia?
So Avery got my question about the ski club, but Sean touched on something that I was going to bring up as well as the ADL at the middle school. We're also through the DEI, we're looking to expand what the ADL, World of Difference coordinators are doing this year. There was a process last, two years ago where they had started to reach down into the three to five grades through peer modeling and peer groups and things like that. And as Sean said, we need to put our money where our mouth is. So if we're going to be asking people to do all of this extra work and expanding on it this year. Betsy, I know you said you don't know what the middle school was doing, but I think it's worth circling back and, you know, finding out what their, their plan is at that point. Because we are going to be asking them to expand upon what they had been doing. So if there's a way to support that on this end, I would absolutely be behind that as well.
Avery?
So to follow up, Alicia, great point. And Bill, you have in your measurement criteria for objective two, you actually list for advisors. I would assume, I know at least one of them is a middle school teacher. And so I would hope that the ADL gets listed on the Stony and Blanchard lists. Because they are critical for your objective two.
That's correct.
Valerie?
Can I just jump to a high level for a second? Are we approving the three new stipends that Betsy talked about as pilot, moving from pilot? Or are we approving this whole list of clubs like we did with athletics where we said, we think this is, you know, acceptable to continue? What, I know the agenda says vote, so I'm just trying to clarify.
My understanding is we'd be approving the whole, the whole list, including the three ones that were previously pilots and that will now be full club. Do I have that straight?
Yes, that's correct.
So if. I would think based on the comments we've also had so far, i- if there were additional submissions, if as the year evolves, if the, there are additional offerings, we can always circle back and, and supplement this list at a later time.
Okay, thank you. In, in that case, I just have another question or for more details on like the instrument and music ones. Which ones are virtual, which ones are in person? Are they more spread out? I mean, I know Desi had kind of released some in the last week or two, like an updated thing. And those adaptive tools that you mentioned, Bill, are great as a former trombone player. But I just, I mean, I just don't know how comfortable I personally feel about instruments in a indoor room and singing. It seems like all the things we're really trying to avoid.
Yeah.
Valerie, I, I can answer, I can talk, speak to, so Ken Culver's group with troubadours and Symphony Winds, those are both being done on the stage rather than in his regular room. So he has that set up during the day and his after-school program will run exactly the same way with the same spacing and everything for the winds, for his, for the orchestra. Michael Su had outdoor practice today. So he's set up with that, with, with the spacing and things that they've done. And Karen has also spread out into the PAC as well. So I think every time, you know, and we had set up a tent for Karen in the back with chorus and that worked for about a month and a half. And now we're just getting into different weather. So we have set up a new situ, a new program for her. She'll do some remote and she'll do some in person too. But they are, they are like, okay, go ahead, Valerie.
Sorry, I didn't want to cut you off. You can.
I, I was just saying that they are, they are, they are doing the same precautions that we're doing every day in school, you know? And so they, they have that set up differently and, and obviously using larger spacing to do some of the things that they're doing.
Yeah. I mean, I would say it's a little bit different than a classroom, right? Cause we, we're, they're wearing the masks in the classroom and we're purposely expelling air and moisture for an instrument or singing. But I thank you for the details, I appreciate that. And just as a new member, can someone clarify, like, is this the typical point of the year where we do this? Or it sounds like some of these have been running, so they don't wait for the approval or the stipends? Or how does that work?
So that, so this is about the time that we approve it, but usually we, we have kicked off, you know, by the end of August, we've had a freshman activity fair and they start joining clubs and we just get going. This was the first year that we said, let's open the schools before we talk about what we can do after school. So we have really been holding people at bay. There've been a couple of groups, the science team had competitions that they were getting ready for so that they were well aware that it has to wait to be officially approved. But they were doing some remote classroom time, in Google Classroom time. So I, I, I won't say that they weren't. John, John Rogers has been working on all the DECA program, even though he hasn't been able to go with it until we just said everything's fine tonight. So some people, a lot, there's been a lot of prep going into it in hopes that we were going to be able to run. So some people, a lot, there's been a lot of prep going into it in hopes that we were going to be able to run activities, but very few people meeting until, until we say yes tonight.
Yeah, I, I think the, that it really is a difference this year, that in a typical year, Valerie, there is kind of an assumption that anything that ran last year can run again this year and that it would be voted on this time of year. And then we'd just be adding the new ones. This was obviously a unique year that we kind of went, had every club go through the process of applying for approval to really give the prince, the building principal, that extra step to ensure that the activity could be done appropriately and safely under these conditions. And I understand the concerns about music. And I, I tend not to make personal comments, but as, as someone who personally had kids who did music in high school, I absolutely trust these educators, that whatever they have decided is safe. I completely trust their judgments and that they're following all of the appropriate regulations. We just have, as such a fantastic performing arts department, I absolutely trust them with my kids because I have done previously. Other things I saw at the hands, Chris?
Yeah, so since there were so many questions on middle school activities, we have a chance to hear from the faculty advisor for a very popular middle school activity that I was hoping to bring in and just get a little perspective there. So I'm bringing in Karen Socko from Blanchard.
Thank you and welcome, Karen.
All right, had to remember to unmute. I feel like that's what I've been doing all day. So I had messaged Chris because the question had come about about middle school activities and with Blanchard Theater Arts, I run the musical in the fall and the the play in the spring. And obviously this year that wasn't going to happen as far as the way it normally does. As a matter of fact, our Fiddler on the Roof set is still sitting on the Blanchard stage right now. Chris, you're the head of getting that apart when we can do that. But the paperwork, I briefly saw the paperwork for the stipend and to apply to do something and then could never find it again. So that was part of the problem. Then this fall have run into the, the, the issue of being overwhelmed with being able to teach my six classes every single day. Planning for one day of classes is taking me six hours a day. So to add into that and after school activity, and I know I have many kids, I've had so many middle schoolers talking to me about it and they're disappointed, they're upset. And I kind of thought, well, maybe in the spring, if things open up, we could do something and maybe put on something outside. But it feels like maybe now that, you know, we can't do that if we can't have another round, like requesting a stipend or doing this again. And then it was the paperwork trying to fill out. And a lot of the, my other colleagues that also normally run a lot of popular clubs had the same issues as far as just not having the time because of the demands of the schedule for teaching. The work-life balance is not good right now. So as much as this is important for the kids, I guess that's the feedback I wanted to give you because Betsy had said that she didn't have the, you know, any clue about the middle school, but that's what kind of the discussions in our hallways are going. And I know theater arts is happening at Stony, but I also know that they have that as a class during the school day. So that makes that a little, maybe, I don't know if it's easier, but just there's that there. So I guess that's, I guess that was the input that I'd had was that it would be great if there was another round and saying, well, maybe some activities want to pick up at the half year or can. If things get easier or better, if we could do that, that would be fabulous. But again, I also had a hard time finding the paperwork to, the stipend paperwork request. Once I saw it, once I couldn't remember where I saw it. So I guess that's it.
Thanks for joining us, Karen, and thanks for that feedback. I think that, that does make a lot of sense that that our, our teachers are, are struggling to, to make this model work and, and to have a work-life balance, if, if any. I know this has been super challenging and layering something, another commitment on top of it. I can understand why that would be difficult. It also does seem to make intuitive sense why that might play out differently at the high school where a lot of our high schoolers are so in heavily involved in the administration and running of the clubs. But really at our middle school level, more of that burden, I'm sure, does fall on, on the faculty advisor to do that, that organization and administering of the clubs. So I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn here. I guess I'll, I'll look to you, Bill. I, I don't think I would have any objection to having another round. I mean, we know this is a year that requires a lot of flexibility. So if we do have activities that aren't able to run right now, or if we have limited offerings at the middle school at this time, but if we think we did want to add activities in, in the springtime, perhaps when the weather gets better, if, if our, if our students and our staff feel better adjusted to whatever model we're in at that time and, and it's possible. I think the most options we can give to students as possible is, is good. I, I know that makes things a little difficult from an administrative side. So I don't want to be totally.
We have done that in the past and we've, we've certainly been flexible to benefit students. So that would not be out of the norm.
Okay, that's, that's great to hear. So then that would, I assume would just be a partial pro rata, partial stipend. If, if that's something like that's possible. That's good to know.
And Gloria, just to let you know, we, we've had a couple of discussions with, with teachers that are willing to do clubs, but if they see that it's not active, then they might not run the second half. So it's, you know, it will go both ways.
Yeah, that makes sense. So I mean, some of these clubs, we don't know how they will run in a, in a virtual environment and, and if, if they'll be able to function that way. So thank you, Betsy. And the, anything else? Other questions, comments? Not seen any hands. So again, I guess I'll launch with a motion to approve the current list of activity and club stipends, leaving open the possibility of adding additional ones at a later date.
Okay.
And all in favor? Avery?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
And I'm also in favor. So that is unanimous. Thank you so much for joining us, Dean Murphy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy.
Thank you.
And next, we did have on our agenda student activity account balances, but I believe the decision was to hold off on that table, that future meeting.
Yeah, I just need a little more time to review. I had some questions that I needed answered at the school level and just tracking down the right people is taking, is just a little more challenging this year. So we'll be all set, if that's okay, at your next meeting to provide you with that information.
Absolutely. I remember working on that policy, Ingrid. And wow, we know it's a complicated process. So absolutely take the time you need and we'll put it on for next time.
Great, thank you.
Then we're on to school committee, budget goals and priorities. Avery?
Thank you. Sorry to the committee for the late send out. I've been trying to pull those together. But I really needed our vote on Bill's goals because obviously our budget goals are going to stem from the school committee goals, the school's mission, Bill's goals. Ultimately, everything feeds down and the budget goals and directives would really be coming directly from those higher goals. I did send everybody just a rough sketch of something and we can post that. It was really just to sort of get your, everyone's feedback. I don't expect to vote on this. I think that we'll want to hear what the committee says, then we'll talk about it on Monday and bring it back to you all one more time. I also sent along what the select board sent to the town manager as their budget directives, just to sort of give you an idea as to how they've been functioning. And then the other piece in doing my, my homework, I have discovered that policy, we have two policies, 3101 and 3202. And that many other districts have several in the fiscal management sections. And that we may want to look at adding some of these that incorporate some of the foundations that we would use ongoing for budget goals and directives. So with that, does anybody have any feedback? I mean, this is not, these priorities do not get super specific, but as I said, if we take superintendent's goals and sort of apply them, that we know that we would like some priority on DEI and on social and emotional. And I think that's appropriate this year as well as budget management. Being a goal of the finance subcommittee, which is sort of, I feel like it's one in itself. But as we saw, superintendent had some amazing goals for the subcommittee itself. So we already have some of those built in. The other piece that of course we would keep is capital was sort of, kind of runs in parallel to all of this. And then the question I put out to the finance subcommittee was, thank you, Chris, was that I would hope that we can work towards decoupling programmatic changes from the budgetary process. While that's not specifically outlined in these goals, I think that's sort of an overarching idea. But we, we basically, we want qualified, and I think now I, I added the term diverse staff because I think we are looking for a more diverse staff. We obviously want to keep our curriculum and instruction on the, on a positive trajectory. Obviously nowadays, we've got to keep technology infrastructure at its best to support all of the new learning. And then I, I heard over the time that we don't want costs to, to families to restrict anyone's participation. So that was something that I had seen in some other districts that I thought was a, a fair add. But again, I'm just looking for people's feedback on, on how the, the subcommittee's directives are. I can't see everybody, so I can't call on people.
Oh, sorry. So this is great. I'm so glad we're doing this and really appreciative, appreciative to the budget subcommittee for putting this forward. The one thing that I was thinking about today was how so, if you, especially if you think back to the last couple of budget cycles, how staffing is just such a critical piece of it. And how, you know, I think it felt like we got to a point last year where we were weighing different staffing situations, whether it be cutting a program or looking at the, the use of TAs or digital learning specialists in our schools. And I'm wondering if, and I know a lot of what we've, the conversation around creating a budget priorities message is about being proactive before we get to the point where we have to make difficult decisions, really figuring out where our priorities lie. Is there, do we want to go to that level of trying to even quantify at a more, you know, fine staffing level where priorities are? Again, I'm thinking of things like foreign language program, you know, these are recent memories, foreign language programs and teaching assistants where they don't, you know, they wouldn't show up in high level budget priorities, but they might show up in a next level. And I, you know, I don't even know how we quantify that or what words we want to, want to say, but at least start thinking about those types of things because we know that that's going to come up.
Right. And, and I did struggle with how far down into the weeds we go with these priorities. When you look at other school districts, that it's a 20-page document that outlines how their budgets are formed and the processes and we're going to create a schedule. So I feel like we're going to take some baby steps here and, and learn as we go. But it really needs to start with the strategic plan, the school committee's goals, the superintendent's goals. And so just sort of looking for, but I was keeping it high level, yes. But I, I agree that some of those details definitely need to be communicated at some point. Valerie?
Just two thoughts. Thanks for the, to the finance subcommittee for putting something like this together. I think a lot of the budget improvements that we've been talking, improvements to the budget process that we've been talking about are nice to start seeing, you know, tangible and hold it. One thought was, I, I know, just as like kind of a budget newbie, one thing that I continually hear Ingrid mention is kind of about like maintaining last year's circuit breaker for next year's thing. And it, and it does kind of mirror a little bit of the, kind of the bullets on the select board to kind of have something that says like, kind of maintain this funding source for next year's, you know, just kind of because it's, those are things that I think are also really hard for community members or new eyes on the budget process to understand, right? That those are things important to us that don't kind of come up in every conversation, right? That there are things under the surface that we do try to be fiscally responsible about. So some of that, I don't know, like I know you said high level. I don't know if this would go in a different document, but it seems like that might be a, a spot here.
So absolutely. My first, my first notes when I started was to maintain level services and to use school choice and current circuit breakers as the last option for funding, which is what Ingrid has taught us over the last budget cycle is that we are, but you know, she's taught us some of the fiscal responsibility. Some of that is in the fiscal goals policy, but again, this is why I need to sort of weigh out what needs to go in the policies and what needs to go in the directive. But I totally hear you, Valerie. Those are sort of some, some core pieces that we want to use every year. So those, that may fall into a policy versus a directive.
Sorry, last question. Do you see that, again, this probably ties into the, the policy versus directive. Do you see this as a document that we are going to update and vote on every year?
Yes, I think that the policies we want as foundations, but the directives I think could be changeable in, in year to year. And as we get into workbooks and some other pieces that have been outlined, I think the budget process is, is going to become more and more robust as far as what we see and approve and direct.
So if it's something that we approve every year, I, I do, it does lend to me to be a little bit more specific, like how this, yeah, how the select board kind of talks about that they're going to look at health insurance renewal and its impact. Like, is there something that we know coming up this year that you know, would be year, this year specific? I mean, clearly COVID, but you know, teacher, like maybe it would mention teacher negotiations or whether, whatever is kind of a big items coming up each year might relate into it. Thanks.
Alicia?
So I completely hear you about not getting into the weeds on specificity that doesn't necessarily belong here, but I think personally, I would like to see, like Valerie said, our budget directives, as we approve them every year, to talk about not just the things we're looking at in the year, but some proactive things too. I mean, we've discussed how hard it is to respond to things that happen in our buildings from a, a, a facilities management position, a point of view, to respond to them rather than to be proactive. And, you know, pie in the sky, if we suddenly find, you know, we hit oil on the upper field at Abbott one day, I'm going to keep putting that out there until it happens. That we want to start looking at not just what Ingrid has done so well in teaching us about not spending ahead of ourselves, but also start, our budget goals should start looking at how we can proactively, you know, preventative care for our budget, things to look at going down the line, things to look at now that we have our, our facilities management structure in Paul Fox, starting to look at schedules for reviewing things. And I know that that's facilities, it's not budget, but I like to see us be more proactive. I also personally would like to see us as we're talking about staffing ratios and student ratios and classroom sizes and things like that. I want the discussion to be about not just the numbers, but about the social emotional impact and the way that circles back around to other parts of the budget. If we're, you know, keeping our numbers low and keeping our staff supported and having a diverse staff, then we also want to talk about things like having adjustment counselors and how that circles back around to maybe less out of district placements for mental health for long and short term. So I, I think that needs to be part of the discussion as well. Beyond that, I think this is a fantastic. Beyond that, I think this is a fantastic place to start and I'm super excited.
I love the little warble there on super excited. We like lost your, your audio right at the end there, but super excited. I, I am excited that we are proactively starting this conversation earlier. I think this is, this is a great start, I know. Budget Subcommittee is looking forward to having more discussions along this. And, and I do, I, I do think there, there is a lot of value in, as you indicated Avery, you know, separating the potential program changes from the budget process. So if we can start having those discussions with, with the committee, with the administration, with our staff and with the community at a kind of higher level before we get into nitty gritty budget season, I think that will really help the, the process once we do reach the specificity of budget season. So having that, that big picture perspective and that advanced planning and those discussions before we're even into the details of the superintendent presenting a, a proposed budget to us, I, I think that's, that's really going to inform the whole process. So I'm excited that we're doing this. Any other questions, comments for Avery and the budget subcommittee? Alicia.
Just one more suggestion, volunteering people for work. Perhaps the policy subcommittee chair and the finance subcommittee chair can start having a discussion about what policies we might want to start looking at, either adding or adapting as we go forward.
We are definitely going to have to have some policy discussions in reviewing things.
Great idea.
Yeah, I, I think we certainly know that policy subcommittee has a lot on your plate this year. And, and I think it, it's helpful, you know, Avery and I have both done policy previously. So I think we'll, we will continue to discuss policy and kind of interact, you know, cooperate, crossboard with you guys to, to, to find a way to do that. I don't know whether it's going to make sense for those policies to be drafted within finance subcommittee and then referred to you or, or how we exactly figure out how to do it logistically. But I don't think we want to put that whole burden on top of you guys, on top of everything else you have on your plate this year, which is a lot. We got a lot of moving pieces, folks. Anything else at this stage? Any other questions you had for the committee, Avery? Okay. All right. Fantastic. Then I guess we are moving on to another proactive discussion about MCAS. And I guess there are two components of this discussion. One, we're going to get some updates and information from Carrie. And then we're going to consider an M A S C resolution on this topic.
Great, thank you. Chris, I'm going to share my screen. Making sure I've got those permissions. Okay, so I just want to provide you with an update on where we are with MCAS for this school year. Background and reorient you as to when we test and on what subject. So MCAS is typically administered starting in grade three and goes up through high school. So you can see in grades three through high school, the literacy or English component is administered every year as well as the math. And then the science, technology and engineering is administered just in grades fifth, eighth, and again in high school where we do grade nine. And I have the little asterisk next to the check marks in grades nine and 10 because that is the only test that could be considered high states in that it is a competency determination, which means it's a graduation requirement. So this is the normal circumstances here. Now, last spring, in early March, when we closed down due to the pandemic, the tests were canceled. And in order to obviously not hinder any progress toward graduation, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education determined that for students in grades nine through 12 of last school year, remember, we're still in the spring of last year, a passing grade in a biology, chemistry or physics course would replace the science, technology and engineering competency determination, which means instead of having to pass the MCAS, if they passed one of those classes throughout their high school career, that would be covered for that requirement in science. And then that third bullet there indicates that English and math was still a requirement for graduation. And they did not make any sort of concession the way that they did for science. So for school year 2021, which is where we are now, as of this point in time, they are saying that we are administering the MCAS. So up top where it says, what's the same this year? Well, this coming spring, we are pegged to administer the MCAS in grades three through eight, literacy, math and science, technology and engineering. Also in grade nine, we will do the biology MCAS, which is typical. And then in grade 10, that's when we administer the English and math. And that will take place this spring. These tests are in person, they're online, but they're in person. And so all of those components are new. Something that is new this year is that this January, we are going to add into our scheduling an additional MCAS administration. And that's mainly for the current juniors who didn't get to take the spring MCAS last year as sophomores, but they still need that English and math MCAS requirement for graduation. So this January, English and math MCAS is pegged to be offered to high school students so that they can pass the test for the graduation piece. They can also choose to wait until May and take it for the spring administration. So that last bullet, spring 2021, the current 11th graders, as I mentioned above, can take ELA or the English and math MCAS in the spring instead of in January if they choose. And either of those administrations can also cover any 12th grade students who didn't pass the MCAS in previous years and you have the opportunity to retake it. So that's kind of where we are. Of course, there are concerns throughout the state and we just want to kind of highlight some of these concerns around MCAS. The time on learning varies significantly right now from one district to the next. So for example, there are districts who have gone fully remote. And as a result, they may be able to cover more content that way because it's more content oriented. And we chose not to go in that direction because we understood or felt that there were a lot of benefits to getting these students in person. Also, for other districts that have the hybrid model, they have full days in, during some of the days and then completely asynchronous for the other days. Whereas we have connection with students every day, but there is that midday transition to, for students to travel home. So as a result, the timing of the minutes or hours over the course of the year will vary significantly. So that kind of puts us at, and it may be an advantage or a disadvantage, depending on how you're looking at it relative to other districts. The second bullet, we have established priority standards. No school district would be able to cover all of the Massachusetts standards like they normally would. So we have developed priority standards. And it was a thoughtful process, but it was a Westford specific process. We looked at some larger scale resources to help guide the process. But priority standards will vary from one district to the next. And the state has not released priority standards for all of the districts in Massachusetts, so we created our own. Third bullet, in-person time is precious, so we're a little concerned about taking up that time to offer standardized testing. Additionally, our, our LA students who we have indicated they don't have to come to school would now potentially have to come to school to take the MCAS test because it is an in-person test and that has not changed for this school year. We also know that inequities are more pronounced during the hybrid model. For some students, they have a lot of coaching at home or they may have environments that are set up that it's more conducive to school and learning. Whereas other locations may not be so much. So we just want to be sensitive and we are sensitive to the fact that we know that these inequities are, can really show up during times like this with the hybrid model. And then lastly, the social emotional wellbeing of students is our top priority in school. And we even heard earlier, prior to the school committee meeting, we were on with student council, Westford Academy students. And they had already started expressing concerns about whether or not they will be equipped because they know they aren't covering as much material. And we reassured them that nobody in, in the state is covering all of the material. But we certainly don't want this to be an added pressure for students and, and for staff as well. So I share these concerns with you because I know that there was talk and you're going to, I think, after this presentation, talk about a resolution that has come from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And it requests a moratorium on MCAS testing. And I just wanted to share with the committee, and Bill and I have spoken, so of course he's in full support of everything that I'm presenting, but we would very much be in support of your consideration to get on board with any resolution on the school committee level. So those are my slides. I'm going to stop sharing.
Thank, thank you, Carrie, for, for all those updates. Just to clarify for, for those who might not be familiar with Massachusetts Association of School Committees, that is a, an umbrella group encompassing all school committees across the state. And what we're going to be considering is a resolution that they have developed. This is a resolution. It is a statement of position. It is not a decision we can make. Individual school committees have not been empowered to make this choice for our districts, at least not at this time. But if all school committees across the state do band together and make a statement, I, I would hope that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education would, would listen to that and understand the concern being voiced by our individual communities about this testing and the impact on time on learning and the impact on our, our students. So I, Chris, I don't know if you're able to bring up that resolution. I'm sure there's going to be more discussion and there may be questions for Carrie as well. But just to at least get the, the resolution on the table, because that was kind of what had precipitated this. The, so the proposed resolution, and again, to clarify, this is a, a statement of principle. This isn't a decision we can unilaterally make for our district. But it would be our hope that, that Desi would consider a lot of the concerns that Carrie voiced. There, there has long been concern about high, high stakes testing and the impact on our students. In particular during this year, the COVID impact and the associated learning models and the disparate impact that that has had on students with learning disabilities, lower socioeconomic status, ELL students, minority students. The social and emotional impact on our, our students is being seen and continuing to be seen. And as Carrie mentioned, this is, this testing is an additional source of stress and also a, a loss of very precious and valuable face-to-face instructional opportunities, not to mention the logistical challenges that we have a hybrid model. So how do we administer these exams to A pod and B pod without learning, losing further, having further disruptions and complications for our teaching staff? And how would we administer this for our remote learning academy students? I, obviously if it is required, our school district will comply with the requirements. And, and I have no doubt in, in their ability to navigate it and figure out a way to make this happen. But at least for myself as a school committee member, I don't think this is a burden our school committee, I, I mean, our, our school system should, and our students should have to bear. I am in favor of the M A S C resolution, which does call for a moratorium this year, which alters the graduation requirement and, and leaves it to our school administration to determine what the appropriate graduation requirement should be without MCAS. So I guess I, I kind of summarized what the resolution is without reading it word for word, but it is up on the screen. Certainly at this point, I'll turn it over to questions, comments from the committee. If you have questions for Carrie on any of the specific things she said or comments about the resolution, please chime in.
So I have a quick question. I mean, I'm in full support of the, of this resolution. But Carrie and Bill, do you have any sense as to how many days it would take out of learning at the high school to, as, as you guys have both indicated, how are we going to administer this to all 11th graders in two pods, in, in multiple classrooms? I mean, logistically, I'm having a really hard time getting my head around how that would work. I feel so bad for the RLA students who then would be required to come in. I, I just, there's so many problems with, with moving forward with the, the testing. Logistically, stress-wise, I mean, the kids don't need anything more this year.
No, certainly the, the kids nor the staff. The staff is very anxious about this also. And this, this proceeding with the MCAS this year makes absolutely no sense. As, as you've indicated and Carrie's indicated, there are so many different models out there. And, you know, we're looking at, you know, I've always said 180-day school year. When you take the degree of assessments that we do, really nets out to about 165-day school year. And so there are a lot of days that, that are in fact lost. And so our students, our students lose with this and our staff loses with proceeding with the MCAS. So I'm, I'm hoping the commissioner and the Board of Education will take heed of these resolutions and, and cancel it for this year, certainly.
Valerie.
Yeah, I, I'm in support of this as well. I think it's, I think I, I read it in an article because I saw that the Concord, Concord Carlisle School Committee supported this as well, and that's where I've kind of found it. But one of them, one of the members was quoted, quoted as saying, their standardized tests don't make sense if there's no standardized learning environment. And that just kind of made sense, right? Everybody's dealing with their own different environments this year. And the other reason I really support this is for our staff. I know the W E A took kind of an impromptu executive board vote in support of this as well. And I just think anything we can do to fully support them.
Ming Chen.
I have to unmute, forgot about that. I was saying, skip the pandemic study, I think I mentioned many, many times that the pandemic is actually creating huge, huge, huge disparity and the inequity. And then widen the achievement gap between the students because of the remote learning. Now we're moving to hybrid learning, some of kids or some of districts doing hybrid, some are doing remote. Some of the family, they, they in their homeschool. Some of them, they put kids into private school. And then we have different paths and cohorts. And then some parents are hiring like private tutors because clearly the public education failed this time, completely failed. So there is, I'm not trying to sugarcoat this because we can talk about like how great this school year looked like. But, but a lot of parents, they cannot afford to stay home. And then I heard their complaints and then it failed them. And then I know that the kids now behind this year. How behind? I don't know. And then the only way to figure out how behind they are maybe is to go through some standards. I don't know what kind of standards we have been using to access the kids. This is not about whether MCAS is good or bad. This is about there is something which has been used consistently for the last couple of decades in the state. I know the stress, I know, I know a lot of stuff. But in order to actually to figure out where the inequities are, we need to know with data. And then the only, the only way I can say with data is to actually have some kind of assessments. I would prefer we actually go with data-driven decisions instead of like feel-good decisions. Because I really want to bring the case back on track. They are not on track. And then under the inequities, I will say that not only we need to actually do some kind of benchmark testing, we also need to collect every single demographic data, say, why do you have private tutors? Why they are doing homeschooling? Why do you are going to remote learning? Why they are going to in-person learning? To say what different education model, the impact on the kids. Because, because without that data, there is no way first to help bring the case back. I seriously think that the case now off track. As for the graduation requirement, yeah, that's where I have some question because the case now really behind. But for the, for the seniors, they are behind a little bit because they lost last spring. They lost a little bit this, this fall. But I talked to some of seniors and they don't care anymore because 25% is school learning, but it doesn't actually hurt them too much. What really hurts are the juniors and sophomores or the freshmen. So, so yeah, I cannot support this resolution because in order to help the kids, we have to figure out where they're behind.
Alicia?
So, given that I have a child who we're constantly looking for evaluations and we're constantly looking for data points to see where we are and what we need to achieve, I can understand your point of view, Ming Chen. But I can also tell you that when a child is in a traumatic learning environment, you're not going to get a clean assessment. You're not going to get a true picture of where they are. We are still in this moment. We are still triaging. And I think for me, adding more stress to our staff, adding more stress to our students, adding, taking away time on learning that they, we could be doing in-house assessments. We could be allowing our staff to be working with our students rather than teaching, you know, to a high-stakes test is far more valuable than any data the MCAS is going to give us. Personally, I have always had the opinion of the MCAS that it's a test that evaluates whether or not you take good tests well. And that's not necessarily my priority for this year. I understand that we need metrics and I understand that we need to know where kids are, where, who is falling behind, who is surging ahead. But I don't think the MCAS is the answer and I don't think removing time on learning is the answer. So personally, I am absolutely in support of this resolution.
Yeah, I'll, I'll echo that, that Ming Chen, I completely hear you on the need for assessment and the need to constantly evaluate where our students are. I guess I just, I would agree with Alicia that I would err on the side of trusting our local administrators and our local teaching staff who work directly with our students to make those evaluations and to provide the necessary supports for students who are struggling than an arbitrary standardized test. I, I trust, I trust our educators to make those assessments. And I think data-driven decision-making is important and those assessments and support for all those students who are at, in all different places with this learning model is vitally important. I would just, I just think that's more appropriately done at a local level, especially at a time like this. So that's, that's my two cents on the topic. Other comments, questions? Chris?
I'll keep it brief. Yeah, I'm in favor. When I look at it through the lens of what's best for our students right now, I don't see how I couldn't do anything but vote in favor of the resolution.
Anyone, anyone else or would someone like to make a motion?
I make a motion to support the MASC resolution to, I think they're calling it a moratorium to MCAS.
Second.
And all in favor, Avery?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
No.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
And I would also be in favor. So it does pass, not unanimously. And in conjunction with this discussion, the MASC statewide meeting is taking place virtually this year on November 7. I know in the past, members have attended an in-person meeting and we've kind of had to be kind of deliberative as to who was doing that because it involved travel costs and hotels and whatnot. This year, that this event is available virtually. So I think it would be open to anyone on the committee who wants to attend. But there is a morning portion of the meeting that has speakers and information. And then there's the afternoon portion that is the delegate assembly that would consider this and other resolutions. So if we have a volunteer who might be interested in attending that afternoon session, we can designate a delegate to the MASC assembly to represent us on our behalf. And I'm seeing a hand.
I am absolutely planning on being there. I love the MASC November convention. I'm so sad it's not happening in person, but I would, I would definitely volunteer to represent us at the delegate convention.
Any other volunteers want to be considered? Well, then I will nominate Alicia Curtin-Mallan to be our delegate to the MASC General Assembly on November 7.
Second.
And all in favor, Avery?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
And I'm also aye, so that is unanimous. Thank you, Alicia. And thank you, Carrie, for the presentation and the update. We will see what happens as the situation continues to evolve. And next up is a policy subcommittee.
Okay, I will take this. We have the anti-discrimination harassment policy that we brought at the last meeting for a first reading. Just a brief refresher on this. This was dictated by changes to federal law, Title IX. And so we really had this policy given to us more or less from the civil rights attorney for the district. And Courtney Moran, as you recall, gave a presentation at the last meeting to overview, given a review of some of these changes. And so it has been up for public comment since the last meeting through last Friday. That we received no public comment on it. The committee met on Friday morning. And we, you know, we have no changes. The one thing we did do was, if you recall at the last meeting, we talked about how this will supplant two existing policies, two existing harassment policies. One of those is in the staff section of our policies, which is the 4000s. And one is in the student section of our policies, which is the 5000s. And so we made the decision that this policy would exist in both sections so that people can find it easily. So it's got a dual number and let's see, I can share. Look at that quickly. There we go. So you see, it has two numbers, one in the 4000s, one in the 5000s, so that people will be able to find it in both places. And I don't think we've done that before. So we'll see how that works out. Otherwise, I think, you know, we can see if there are any comments today. But like I said, no public comments. It's been vetted by the attorney. And I would move to waive the second reading.
Valerie?
So moved. I just wanted to add that one, another part of our discussion on Friday was about the two policies that we would be removing. We decided not to remove them immediately, right? And we were going to kind of have that conversation with, like a handbook update.
Right. So at some point, presumably, those two policies that we're superseding will get removed. There are a couple of conversations around that. One is logistically, nobody that's on the current committee has ever seen a policy get removed. So we had a discussion around, okay, you know, there's no policy that directly addresses that. I think the general sense from conversations and NINA was kind enough to dig through the archives to find an example of where a policy was removed. I think it was in 2011. So thank you, NINA. It looks like it's treated like a policy update. You know, the update is to remove the policy. So it's a, you know, it's a majority vote of the committee. So we may just address it that way. At some point, we may also want to look to update one of the policies on policies to specifically address removal of a policy. So we'll kind of keep an eye on that. But the other reason that we're, we're not removing it yet is that we did want to have a follow-up conversation presumably with Courtney Moran about just the logistics of the language getting into the handbooks. When is that getting updated? We did have a couple of follow-up questions based on what we saw on the website where things were linked to. And so we wanted to use the former policies just as a guide for us to say, here's, in the past, here's where I would have gone to look for information if I had a question about harassment. It spells out what to do. We wanted to make sure that we felt like any staff member or student who wanted to, you know, look into that or bring a potential case forward, would know where to go, would have the right information. And so we're, we'll follow up with Courtney on those. I think she'll have all the answers for those questions. But we did, at our meeting, did come up with a couple of questions. So at some point down the line, we will be bringing the other two policies for removal. Does that cover it, Alicia and Valerie?
Okay, let's keep ourselves on procedural track. And first thing, Chris, did you make a motion to waive the reading?
I did. I think it was seconded.
Valerie, was that your second? Okay, so Chris's motion is just to waive the second reading. Valerie is seconded. We'll do that one quick. Avery? Alicia? That, that was close enough. We'll call that an aye. It had a couple syllables. Chris?
Aye.
Ming Chen? Messed up my order.
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you know, it's getting late when I'm getting punchy. Okay, so procedural motion out of the way. Next substantive motion. Chris?
Yeah, motion to adopt policies, joint policies, P4204, P5204, non-discrimination and harassment.
And second, Avery, Avery second. And for discussion on that motion, I guess I will just add, it does make sense to me to, at this point, approve the adoption of this policy so that we are in legal compliance, but not to remove the others just yet. I think that was thoughtful consideration from the policy subcommittee to make sure that all of the links and the avenues to obtaining this information get followed down to make sure that we're fulfilling our notice responsibilities to the community. And doing that follow-up first before removing the policies makes sense. In terms of the logistics for how to remove the policies, it does, does make sense to me that, that we would do it. I mean, typically, when we're updating a policy, it's often the same number. So the update and the removal kind of happen simultaneously, even if, even if it is a complete replacement. This one, I guess, is a little different because we're in new number territory. So I don't know, perhaps we need to phone a friend and call, call the authority on policy, Erica Cole, and see, see what her thoughts are. But I'm sure we can logistically figure that out. And I will leave that to the expertise of the policy subcommittee in terms of the timing and the logistics for when and how to do that. Any other questions or comments on the policy or the logistics before we vote? Seeing none, call for the vote. Avery?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
And I'm also in favor. Thank you, Policy Subcommittee, and thank you to Courtney Moran for getting us up to date. Next up would be school calendar revision.
I think we're going to, Carrie, address the conference schedule in the
So the, the conferences in the fall are elementary and middle schools. And those are pegged for November 23rd and 24th. So they're, they're typically two days in a row. The first day being a no-school day so that conferences can take place in the evening and teachers come in kind of later. Then the second day, which is the day that we're discussing now, which is November 24th, typically there's a two-hour delay so that conferences can be finished up in the morning prior to students coming to school, hence the two-hour delay. In the hybrid model this year, the two-hour delay doesn't make sense because students leave at the early release time. So we couldn't bring students in just to turn around and send them back home. So what we've agreed to do this year and we're bringing before you is to keep November 23rd as a no-school day as originally planned and accounted for. And then on November 24th, instead of a two-hour delay, we will just instead make it an early release day. So after the first part of the day when students go home, there will be no work or logging on in the second part of the day because that will be conference time instead. So for November 24th, we will not do a two-hour delay. Instead, we will make that an early release day for conferences. And then just, just while we're here, in March, we have a, the same type of situation for a second set of conferences just for the elementaries. And would look to apply that same methodology to March 23rd, which is pegged for a two-hour delay. But instead, assuming we're in the same model, we would like to make that an early release day.
Okay, questions? Valerie?
Carrie, can you just discuss the process? Carrie, can you just discuss the process? Did you vet this with the leadership team or what other stakeholders were kind of brought in for this?
Sure. Yes, we did discuss it with the leadership team. And we discussed it with the WEA at our monthly consult meeting. And people felt as though it was the most reasonable solution, given the, given the schedule.
I, I appreciate it. And as a pod A family that's in school that week, I appreciate saving that Tuesday morning. I do have a slight concern for working families. I feel like that previous schedule with the two-hour delay really let working parents kind of try to get that morning conference in before their workday. And now judging from the times that are called out by grade level, it's really kind of early afternoon. But I don't have a solution for that. I just wanted to raise that concern.
Right. And if there's any parent who has an issue, I mean, the hope is that there'd be an opportunity for the, for the evenings, you know, through eight o'clock on that first night. But if, if there's a situation that a parent has and truly none of these times work, then it might be an opportunity just to reach out to the teacher and see if something can be set up separately. That's been done before.
I guess I'll, I'll just, perhaps this goes without saying, but to clarify for anyone watching, I'm assuming that all of these conferences are virtual.
That's right.
So that, that also may make it easier for working parents to take, take a few moments from their workday and, and have that conference and not have to do the travel part of it and be in person. But of course, for safety, they will all be virtual. Other comments, questions? Did I see another hand? Thought I did.
That was me, but you asked my question in conjunction with what Valerie said about working parents and schedules and safety. So you asked my question for me.
Great minds. Any, any other, any other questions? Do, do we need to take a vote to approve this as a calendar change or is this really just an update?
I prefer the two because the calendar is within your purview for approving. So we'd we prefer that you do, do vote on this change.
Okay, then I will make a motion to accept the recommendation of our administration to alter the calendar regarding parent-teacher conferences as discussed.
Second.
All in favor, Avery? Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
And I would make it unanimous. Thank you very much and happy, happy to have that advance notice to, to parents so that they can have, have that information and plan ahead for that time. Thank you for addressing it now.
Thank you.
Moving on, final, final logistics here. Warrants. Alicia?
So motion to approve payroll warrant number 2118SP dated October 29th, 2020 in the amount of $2,031,716.41.
Did everyone hear that? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. All in favor, Avery?
I'm just clarifying, Ingrid, is it 41 or 47?
47.
So yeah, I did not, I did not hear. Is that a friendly amendment?
Yep, 47 cents.
Yes. I'm sorry. I thought I said 47.
I thought you said 41.
All right. We will, we will consider that a friendly amendment. Thanks for keeping us on track. Avery? All in favor, Avery?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
And aye. So that is unanimous. And the expense warrant?
Motion to approve expense warrant 2118SE dated October 29th, 2020 in the amount of $775,230.8.
Second.
And all in favor, Avery?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
And aye. So that is unanimous. And last motion, Alicia?
Motion to approve school committee meeting minutes regular session from October 5th, 2020 and October 14th, 2020.
Second.
Any comments, questions, amendments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Avery?
I'm a yea and an abstain because I was not present at the 14th.
Okay, noted. Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
I was staying. I was out on that day.
There are two, October 5th and the 14th.
Yeah, 5th, yeah, 5th, aye.
Okay. And then abstaining for the 14th. Sorry, we did them together. Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
And I would be aye to both. So those are approved. And final motion of the night, Alicia?
Motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to Unit A collective bargaining in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position. The committee will not return to public session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor, roll call. Avery?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye, aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
And I would also be in favor. So thank you to everyone who joined us this evening and have a good night. We will see you in two weeks.